Our screen's still not working.
How much was it?
No, how much was it? For the whole thing? Oh, yeah, and that too? I didn't even know what that was for. Doors open. Oh, they...
It must be a drum roll or something he's looking for.
Yeah, that's what it was. He and Claudia back there.
Yeah, looking for a drum roll.
Waiting on the drum roll coming out.
Were you gonna give me a drum roll? Trumpets?
My thumbs aren't in trumpet. I may be able to give you a fanfare next year.
It is seven o'clock, we do have a quorum, we'll call the city council meeting in order. First item on the agenda is gonna be the invocation given by Mayor Pro Tem Durham, and then after that, we're gonna have a special presentation of the pledge to our flag. Would you join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. If you could, if everyone would be seated, well, I'm just saying if I could, don't be seated, please. Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Vaughn is scheduled to do the pledge tonight, but he is in the hospital, can't be here. He and I were talking, and we thought it'd be a great idea if we could ask our new state 5A softball championship team and all of its staff to please come down and lead us in our pledge to the allegiance to both the American and Texas flags. Please come and honor us. Uh, yeah! And then after they do the pledge, the rest of you can be seated, and I'm gonna ask all of you to please stay down here with me for a few minutes, okay? Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much.
You're supposed to have it in the drawer.
I ain't get one of those.
It used to be in the drawer.
I'm gonna need it.
I didn't have the ability to... I wasn't able to go down to Austin and watch, but I saw him both on TV on Fox. In my backyard, sitting on my patio. And it was one Saturday night at the restaurant watching the White People. It was awesome. Just a cruise, like spread your view, put the fourth tremendous effort, and tremendous sportsmanship. I was so proud of the sportsmanship that y'all had been ready to the other team. And I was so proud of y'all, and you may not so proud here, but we just wanna show you how much we appreciate all the work you've done, all the efforts you've put in, and your family members. And I know all of you are willing to say that the end of your family members wouldn't be able to pass what you did. So we want to thank you in person. With that, what I'm gonna do is ask each one of them to come up. We'll start at Andrew Cissin, and come up to the microphone. And I want you to introduce yourself, and if you will, you can tell us what position you play. And if you wanna say a few words, say anything, make yourself known. Just come up to the microphone and do that.
No pressure.
Hi, my name is Jessica Nelson, I'm a junior, and I play right field.
Hello, I'm Gabby Vasquez, I am a sophomore, I play second base, and go Farmers!
Hi, I'm Summer Croga, I'm a sophomore, and I play second outfield.
Hi, I'm Alicia Bell, I'm a freshman, and I play third base.
Hi, I'm Tommy Goodman, and I'm a freshman, and I play second base in outfield.
Hi, I'm Jessica Stahl, I'm a senior, and I play second base.
Hello, I'm Megan Haggard, I'm a junior, and I play third base, and I just wanna say thank you to our fans, our parents, and our coaches.
Hi, I'm Selena Garcia, I'm a senior, and I play shortstop.
Hi, I'm Emily Lasky, I'm a senior, and I am the catcher.
Hi, I'm Morgan Mitchell, I'm a senior, I play first base.
Hi, I am Mary Beth Gorsuch, and I'm a freshman, oh! Freshman, and I'm a pitcher.
Hi, I'm Chloe Campisi, I'm a senior, and I'm a pitcher, and I just wanna say thank you to my parents and all my family for helping me along this journey.
Hi, I'm Becca Scott, I play first base, I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Miranda Worthington, I'm a junior, and I play pitcher in outfield.
I'm Nicole Nelson, I'm a freshman, and I play outfield.
Hi, I'm Lindsay French, I'm a freshman, I play outfield.
Hi, I'm Casey Tossado, I play left field, and I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Gabby Guzman, I play shortstop, and I'm a junior.
I'm Melissa Tyus, I'm one of the athletic trainers for Lewisville High School.
I'm Portia Albert, and I'm the head JV coach and one of the assistant varsity coaches.
I'm John Ann Roper, and I'm the varsity assistant, and I just wanted to tell all of you guys how much we appreciate all the parents and all the support from the city, from our administration at Lewisville High School, Kilo Campus, and the Harmon Campus. It's just been unbelievable, and like we've said all along, we could not have done any of it without everybody. Thank you.
I'm Coach Alexander, I'm the head softball coach at Lewisville High School, very proud to be. We want to present a ball to the city. Hopefully, I haven't had a chance to talk to Coach Mays, but hopefully, we're gonna get a signed jersey as well. But I've gotta get that clear through my boss, but hopefully, we're gonna make sure that all that takes place. But again, you know, ditto to what Coach Roper said, thank you to everybody that has been a part of this Lewisville Police Department for, man, what an escort, out and then right back in. It was phenomenal. And then the fire department for, you know, the fire trucks for the pep rally and allowing us just to take up some of your time. The whole city has really contributed, and I'm very proud that we're bringing, we brought back the state championship.
Everybody kinda crowded in here, 'cause we're gonna make a presentation to you now from the city. And I wanted to let them speak first, because I didn't wanna steal their thunder, but I guess they were a little shy. You know, they didn't mention that they were ranked, what, fourth? Fourth, isn't that right? Even in your...
In fourth, in district.
Yeah. And then when you went down there, what was your ranking?
In the state.
Yeah.
State.
So we go down there, what do we do? We kick tails, young ladies. And not only that, you know, Lewisville's led in very, Lewisville Independent School District, not just the city of Lewisville, but the school district itself has been fortunate to have a few state champions along the way. However, this is the very first, very first, Lewisville Independent School District softball state championship. I think that is... Coach Mays, you wanna step up here with me? Well, I'm gonna read this proclamation, or you can stay there if you, I say Coach Mays, I'm sorry. Come on, Mays, Coach Mays, why don't you up here too? And Coach Alexander, I want both of you up here. You know, this is a very special item of community interest, because not only is these girls, young ladies stated, it's not just about them, it's about the citizens, the community, and their family members. And I see so many of you out here, we thank you so much for the time and the effort that you put forth with these young ladies to make sure they had the availability to play these games and to attend in these sessions. We appreciate it so much, you made us so proud. You know, there's the water tower right down the street, there on Main Street. Has anybody ever seen those state championship things up there? Mr. City Manager, where are you? Sit up there a little bit, I think we're gonna need to add something to that lot of stuff. I may have to give up my fifty dollars a month to do it, but we're gonna get it done, don't worry about it. We've got this special proclamation for each and every one of you, okay? We're gonna get each one of you your own separate one, but for tonight, we didn't have all your names and stuff, anyway, tonight, we're gonna give this main one, and maybe y'all can display somewhere proudly in your, in your arena. Whereas for more than one hundred years, the students and programs at Lewisville High School have been a source of pride and inspiration for the entire community. And whereas winning a Texas high school state championship in any team sport requires high levels of skill, determination, desire, and teamwork. And whereas the LHS Lady Farmers did this month win the girls softball state 5A title game, and have been declared Texas high school state championships in that sport. And whereas the hard work and success exhibited, exhibited by the members of that championship team reflect the spirit and character of all of Lewisville, and bring us pride and joy, and provide to residents and businesses of this city a true honor. Now therefore, I Dean Urick, Mayor of the city of Lewisville, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2013 as LHS Lady Farmers Softball Team Month, and commend and congratulate every single member of the 2013 LHS Lady Farmers Softball Team, and urge all residents of Lewisville to celebrate their tremendous accomplishment, accomplishment proclaimed this third day of June 2013. Let's give 'em a big hand!
Really, I'm not gonna say anything, I'm gonna let Lori say this. I want Coach Alexander, and parents all know this, and LISD people know this, but I want Coach Alexander to tell the council and those here tonight what you did Thursday morning before y'all left to plant, to plant the seed. Thursday mor- thir- no, not where y'all ate or anything like that. Thursday, Thursday morning, we're, myself and two assistant ADs were in the conference room, and there's lots of noise outside our office, more noise than usual. And so we came inside, you explained the purpose of the trip to our office.
We were getting ready to go to the pep rally that morning, and somebody in the office said, hey, you know, why don't you get the kids together and come in here? And I was like, that's a pretty good idea. So I brought them all in there, and of course, if you know this bunch at all, they're pretty loud, and they're hard to get under control sometimes. And so they were actually in an interview, and they did hear us come in there. But what, the whole point of them taking them in there is, in the athletic office, if you've never been in there, lined in the, in the walls are all the state championships with their medals and pictures of their teams and whatever. And I said, this is where your spot's gonna be. Isn't that what I said? And I said, 'cause these are getting moved up and over, and yours is gonna go right there, and, and sure enough, that's where ours is gonna be.
And thank you, and thank you to everyone of you, again, thanks to the family members. Also, we'll let everyone know, and everyone watching on TV, to make sure that you know that Wednesday, at six o'clock, I believe, right out here on the steps of City Hall, we're gonna have a big pep rally welcoming you again, and honoring you, and congratulating you again. So we encourage the entire city to come out to that again. Thank you, everybody.
Is that it, right there?
That's the, yeah, from the stage.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Coach. Thank you for, thank you, no, anytime.
Congratulations.
Absolutely.
Gonna get that water tap.
Hello, Randy.
How you doing?
Lots of family.
Thank you for having us.
We are so blessed with such a great community, that you can just tell the, the community's pride and spirit that we have here just through these young people and their family members, and it's so, I'm so proud and honored to be a representative of this community. God bless all of you, and thank you again very much for all you do. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.074, discussion of election of Mayor Pro Tem and Deputy Mayor Pro Tem will now convene in the closed session. Okay, we'll convene back into regular session, is there any action to be taken, council?
Yes, Mayor. Make a motion to make Councilman Leroy Vaughn mayor pro tem and Councilman TJ Gilmore as deputy mayor pro tem.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Tierney, and a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. opposed? Motion carries. Next item is public hearing, consideration of an ordinance for a zone change request from agricultural open space to light industrial on 1.202 acres located at 432 Barshneck Lane, further identified as SM Hayden Survey, abstract 537, tracks fifteen and sixteen as requested by Tony Rasmussen, the property owner. The property is currently zoned AO and consists of two tracks. The first track is used for storage and vehicle repair, which is currently in non-conforming use. The second track is vacant, but the owner has plans for expansion of his business. The owner is requesting that the property be rezoned to light industrial. Under the current zoning ordinance, a special use permit would be required for an auto repair use in a light industrial zoning district. In this case, however, the property owner submitted the application to rezone the property prior to the effective date of the current zoning ordinance. Therefore, a special permit, a special use permit is not required for the current use to remain. However, any expansion of this business, however, would fall under the new zoning ordinance. Therefore, a special use permit in addition to other requirements such as platting and submitting a site plan would be required for the expansion. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously voted seven zero to recommend approval of the zoning request at the May seventh, 2013 meeting. Recommendation is the city council approve the proposed ordinance amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter seventeen, the comprehen- comprehensive zoning ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Do not have any speaker cards filled out. They entertain a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close public hearing.
Second. Have a motion by Council Ferguson to close public hearing, and a second by Councilman Durham, all in favor? Aye. opposed, motion carries. Councilman Ferguson?
Move to approve the zoning request as stated.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve the request as stated.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilmore, any discussion? Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, that amends the zoning ordinance of the city of Lewisville, Texas, granting zoning changes on the 1.202 acre tract of land, fully and completely described in the attached Exhibit A, ordering a change in the use of said property from agricultural open space district zoning to light industrial district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability determining that the public interest and general welfare demand a zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
All in favor? Aye. opposed? Motion carries. Mister citizen forum, at this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. I do not have any cards filled out. Consent agenda, all the final items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out, submitted to the city secretary. I did not have anybody submit a card, and no council person asked to have it submitted. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham to approve the consent agenda, and a second by Councilman Tierney, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is consideration of a preliminary plat of High Point Oak Estates addition, a 21.245 acre parcel zoned estate townhouse with eighty-six residential lots and five HOA maintained rideaway areas located on the southwest quadrant of Vista Ridge Mall Drive and Denton Tap Road with one associated variance as requested by JBI Partners Incorporated, representing the property owner. This property was recently zoned, rezoned from light industrial to estate townhouse with the intent to build eighty-six single-family detached residential units. The lots and homes will conform to the requirements for a detached product in the ETH zoning with the exception of one variance, to waive the alley requirements thus providing front entry lots. This will allow the lots to be significantly larger than the minimum four thousand square feet required by the ordinance. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the preliminary plat and variance at a four zero vote at its May twenty-one, 2013 meeting. Recommendation is that council approve the plat and the variance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Tierney?
Mayor, I have no problems, move to approve.
Have a motion by Councilman Tierney to approve as presented.
Second.
Second by Councilman Ferguson, any discussion?
Mayor, I'd just like to point out that that's, I think we're over two hundred and sixty, two hundred and fifty single-family homes approved by this council this year. It's nice to see growth in Lewisville.
Amen. All in favor? Aye. opposed? Motion carries. Item nine is consideration of a Brownfields Assessment Program application for the property at 1099 West Main Street. Since the city was awarded Brownfields Assessment Funds in September 2009, staff has been working with property owners and potential buyers to facilitate investigation for petroleum and hazardous material contaminants. CVS Caremark, the prospective developer, redeveloper of 1099 West Main Street, has submitted an application for participation in the program. The Brownfields Advisory Committee unanimously recommended approval of this Brownfields Assessment Program application at its meeting on May seventh, 2013. Recommendation is that council approve the program as presented. Councilman Gilmore?
Move to approve as written, Mayor.
Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to approve as presented.
Second.
Second by Councilman Ferguson, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of waiving the third floor rental fee for Community Services Incorporated to hold their Energy Assistance Program workshop on June twenty-second, 2013 as requested by Paulette Hines, Executive Director. Community Services Incorporated, CSI, is a nonprofit organization that provides utility and weatherization assistance to households in several North Texas counties, including Denton County. CSI has a local office located at 189 Elm Street in Lewisville, Texas. This request is to waive the third floor rental fee for CSI to hold a workshop to conduct intake and process applications, to conduct intakes and process applications for their energy assistance program. Normal rental of the third floor is one hundred and fifty dollars per hour with a two-hour minimum and five hundred dollar deposit. The agency held a similar event on November twelfth, 2012 at the Lewisville Municipal Annex, and the city waived the rental fee for that event. Recommendation is that council consider waiving the third floor rental fee for Community Services, Inc. to hold their Agency Assistance Program workshop on June twenty-second, 2013. Councilman Ferguson?
Very happy to see him hold this workshop, I move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Tierney, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven is consideration of upcoming meeting dates for the city's budget process. City staff has provided a calendar showing the important upcoming, upcoming dates for council meetings regarding the city's budget process. The budget workshop is recommended to be scheduled for August third. Recommendation is that council reviews, review the councilor and direct staff about any changes or to adopt the calendar. My recommendation is, after a discussion with y'all, and nobody any problems with the third day, we go ahead and set the workshop session for Saturday, August the third, with a follow-up for...
Uh, Mayor, I agree with that, uh, move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham to schedule the meeting as stated, and a second by Councilman Gilmore. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item twelve is discussion and consideration of appointments to various city boards, commission committees, on June thirtieth. Various terms of office on the city boards, commissions, and committees will be expiring. Those positions have been identified and current appointees notified. The board, commission, committee appointment process notebooks have been created for council's review, data sheets for members requesting a reappointment, and all new applications have been included in the books, along with attendance data for existing members requesting to be appointed. City council need to identify interview teams, interview dates, and determine which team will be interviewed, which board, commission, and/or committee. Recommendation is that council proceed with the appointment process to the various city boards, commission, committees, and identify interview teams, interview dates, and determine which team will interview which board, commission, committee. I'd like to ask that, as I discussed with you earlier in the workshop session, I'd like to ask if I could, Councilman Ferguson, if you and Councilman Tierney would work together on a team, Councilman Gilmore, if you and Councilman Vaughn would work together on a team, and then Councilman Durham, if you would work with me on a team, and I will get with you. Julie's got some new applications that she's just received, and some different things that she's gotten, just came in, and she will get those to us tomorrow, and then I'll interview, I mean, ask the, the boards and committees that I would like for you to interview at that time. Okay, is everybody all right with that? Do we need a motion on that? Okay, Councilman Tierney, do you have a motion on that, please?
Uh, so move.
Second. Have a motion by Council Tierney to approve as stated, and a second by Councilman Durham, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, we're down to reports. Nika? Bob? Chief, you get to go first.
Nothing, Mayor.
Huh?
No.
What about Saturday?
I have nothing to brag about this year. I just hope for the best.
I understand. Linda? Chief?
Yes, Mayor, just a couple of things to remind people of. First, remind everybody that Thursday is already release day for school, so there'll be some different schools on times, and motorists need to be aware of that. High school lets out at twelve noon, elementary school at twelve-thirty, and the middle school's at one o'clock, or maybe it's the other way around. Twelve-thirty for middle school, and one o'clock for elementary school. And then on Saturday, Battle of the Badge, where we hope to defend our title from last year with our game with the fire department, but just to remind everybody, this year it's at a new location, Toyota Lewisville Railroad Park. Admission is five dollars, children twelve and under are free. The kickoff game will be between the police department and the fire department at about eight-thirty in the morning, and I encourage everybody to come out. All proceeds go to the Denton County Child Advocacy Center.
And there's several different cities that participate this, in this program, I believe, ain't there? Surrounding cities?
Yes, there are several surrounding cities. We, it's a, becoming a bit of a draw now, so that's, that's a good thing.
It is good. It's always a good time had by all, as all the different police and fire departments enjoy being out there and having the camaraderie and the competition. We appreciate both of y'all participating, and appreciate, appreciate all your team members that work with you participating, because we know they could have other things to do, but it's a good cause, and we appreciate it. Carol, how are things going, ma'am?
Well, we have had rain, but we are, the lake still hasn't come up anywhere, still five feet low, and Dallas is actually taking water out of the lake, so when it goes in, it comes out, so, but we're pretty steady at five feet below conservation, so we're okay.
I just want you to know that we've missed you last couple of meetings, you've been sorely missed.
I understand that you were given the report, though, that's good.
Yeah, I think some of it was fraudulent information, so we had to dump each other.
Oh, okay.
We appreciate you, Carol, thank you. And thanks again for all your team members' work that they do on, on the streets and the waters and sewer programs. I continue to get great reports from our citizens about how we keep the streets up and sidewalks and everything, we really appreciate that. I know sometimes they don't hear it very often, but please thank them for us. Donna? Got anything new? Any extra money?
No, sir, working on that one.
Where's Brenda then?
Let you know as soon as it comes in.
Brenda didn't take a vacation with any of you, did she?
That's the annual Government Finance Officers Association Convention or Conference.
That's not part of that IRS thing, is it?
Not at all.
Oh, phew. No dance clashes or anything?
Making sure we stay on top of her.
Had a good job, all right. Mr. Ferris, sir, we're glad to have you here tonight, sir. Look, Mr. Back, he's all smiles, he had a good time tonight. Nothing, sir? What are you laughing about? Councilman Durham?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilman Tierney?
No, sir.
Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, I do have a couple of quick things. Number one, tomorrow, the twenty-twenty-five plan kicks off, we're really excited and would highly recommend if you can come out for even just a little bit, come on out. The event will be at the MCL Grand Theater. We have three different events that you need to put on your calendar, so from four to six o'clock, we have an open workshop, and you can meander around, see what's going on in the city, and where you might want to be able to give some input. From four to six o'clock, we actually have a, a community forum where we're gonna be asking questions and getting a lot of good feedback, we've got a great team of folks there to, to help with getting that information out. Even if you just want to come to burn, it's a great thing, but we want to get your big ideas. And finally, to kick it off, at eight o'clock, from eight to about nine-thirty, we have Downtown Fever, who will be celebrating out in the courtyard, they're part of our first Sounds of Lewisville for the Summer Concerts, so you can come to the event, you can learn about the city, you can give your input, and then you can have a good time right afterwards, so it's, it's a big day. The second thing is, I, I had the opportunity this past week to kayak in Lewisville, actually in the city of Lewisville. Now, people go, what? You can kayak in Lewisville? And no, it's not in the street gutters, there was no broken water main or anything like that. It was actually at Leela, the Lewisville Lake Environmental Learning Area, that, you get in there, you, you start right at the dam, and where the water comes out of the lake and heads on down, that's the Elm Fork of the Trinity River, and we have six miles of some of the most scenic and beautiful riverside that you'd ever want to see. And I, I almost don't want to tell people about it, because it's so wonderful to go down there, but if you get the opportunity, please go, it's right in your backyard, they have an outfitter that, that'll take you there. If you have your own kayak, you can take it and go on down yourself. So if you don't get a chance to get out very often, but you like to be on the water, it's a great way to do it right here in town. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Keane?
No, sir.
Mr. Ferguson?
Uh, just want to, first of all, emphasize that twenty-twenty-five, we encourage everybody to get involved, show up, be there, be a part of your city, and the future of your city. The, don't forget to bring your lawn chair for the concert afterwards, you might want to keep it in your car until you're done with twenty-twenty-five. We've got, for the summer concerts, Downtown Fever, we've got Brave Combo coming up the week after that, on June eleventh, and then in the future, the Kildaires and Orleans Gumbo Kings, and you can see the full schedule at soundsoflewisville.com. Also, just a reminder, Friday nights, Visual Arts League still has their jam sessions, what they call Acoustic Fridays, that's in the art gallery, it's free, come, bring a guitar, come and listen, come have fun. And in the art gallery, we also have a solo exhibit by Dan Lattimore, who's incredibly talented, you'll be amazed when you see his work, and then photography by the Visual Arts League members, and let's see, I think that's it, okay? Thank you.
Question, question for Councilman Ferguson, how was the Chalk This Way event?
Chalk This Way was awesome, you know, I can't believe I didn't bring that up. Chalk This Way was awesome, and appreciate your asking, good turnout, and got a little brief rain, but it didn't hurt the artwork, actually kind of blended the colors nicely. Some amazing talent out there, even the kids were, were really impressive, I think folks had a good time. Most memorable comment I got was the lady that walked up and said, how many years have y'all been doing this? And I said, well, this is the first year, and she goes, oh, well, you need to do it again, so hopefully we will. But glad we did it, and vendors seemed to be happy, and public seemed to be happy, and just kind of a good time had by all, so.
Counselor? Julie? Officer, again, we want to thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for your service that you do each and every day, appreciate it greatly. And I want to apologize to Janelle O'Neal, she did fill out a card for item ten, she, she is with Community Services, Inc., she did not wish to speak, but she was here for questions, and I apologize that I didn't read that earlier, but I do thank you very much for coming up, and it passed, so you're in good shape. Thank you very much. Uh, I just want to, once again, thank our Lewisville High School young ladies for representing us so wonderfully down in Austin, and, and bringing us home this great trophy, I hope all of you saw it over there, it was just a beautiful trophy. Remind everyone, they're gonna have a big pep rally out here on the front of City Hall steps this Wednesday, beginning at six P.M., so we hope you can all come out and support them. And as been mentioned, please do come to the twenty-twenty-five project, it's not an agenda for us to get up and lead a program or anything, it's an avenue for you to speak to us and give us your thoughts, your ideas, and communicate with the council and with staff and the people, the consultants that are helping us with this program, so please come and get your input, because that's what we're looking for. With that, in accordance with Texas Government Code Subchapter D, Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney pending litigation, City Lewisville versus City of Farmers Branch and Camelot Landfield, Texas LP, calls number four-twelve-CV-zero-zero-seven-eight-two, United States District Court for the Eastern District of Texas, Sherman-Denison and Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, application to obtain municipal solid waste permit amendment, permit number one-three-one-two-B, and Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, consider consultation with attorney pending litigation, abstracts of judgment filed in favor of the City of Lewisville, get Hubert E. Long, Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two, property acquisition, Section five-five-one-point-eight-zero-eight-seven, deliberation regarding economic development, we will now convene in closed session. We'll convene back into regular session, is there any action to be taken, council?
Yes, Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager or his designee to sign all documents necessary to amend the amount authorized to release the liens securing the judgments entered against Hubert E. Long by an additional one thousand dollars for a total sum of thirteen thousand dollars.
Second.
Have a motion by Council Ferguson, a second by Councilman Gilmore, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Move to adjourn?
Have a motion to adjourn by Council Ferguson, a second by Councilman Durham, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. (knocking)